Call the regular City Commission meeting Tuesday, November 15, 2011 to order. May we introduce Chaplain Ken Kopick of the Ferndale Police Department to present the invocation. Ken has been with Ferndale since 2005. He's this year's Auxiliary Police Officer of the Year Award winner, and he grew up at Six Cambridge, having moved out of there in 1969.
Thank you very much for this opportunity to be here tonight, Mr. Costelli. Please bow your heads. Glorious Almighty God and Father of all, we give you thanks and praise for giving us another day. We give thanks for the people of this community and for those elected to handle the business affairs of this city. Lord, we ask that you give these leaders compassion to look at these current times from all views. Give them the knowledge and wisdom to make those serious decisions for the betterment of this community. Oh, Lord God, these times are difficult times, and the needs of the people are many. Therefore, we ask that you give this council compassion to enter into the work at hand, and may they serve you in their work, give of themselves, and to fight for what is best for this community and the people. Oh, Lord God, bless them and be with them, and all of us this day and every day to come. Let all business be done for your glory and honor, in Jesus' name. Amen.
May we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we take roll. Mr. Bushy is chasing Bandy. He will not be with us tonight.
Mr. Kellert? Mr. Lenko?
Here.
Mr. Rubino?
Here.
Mayor Costelli?
Here, we have a quorum. Next item is consideration of the following minutes: Public Hearing and Zoning Board of Appeals Meeting, held Tuesday, October 11, 2011; Public Hearing and Regular City Commission Meeting, held Tuesday, October 11, 2011; and Public Hearing and Zoning Board of Appeals Meeting, held Tuesday, October 25, 2011. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the minutes of the Public Hearing and Zoning Board of Appeals and the Public Hearing and Regular City Commission Meeting, held Tuesday, October 11, 2011, and the minutes of the Public Hearing and Zoning Board of Appeals Meeting, held October 25, 2011, be approved as recommended.
Is there support?
I'll support it, but I wasn't here for the October 25th, so is there still a vote to support that?
You better be, otherwise we can't do anything.
So moved.
May we take a vote?
Mr. Lenko?
Yes.
Mr. Rubino?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes, motion carries. Next item is consideration of the receiving and filing the audit of the city's financial statements for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2011. We have Mr. Aaron Stevens of the auditing firm of Abraham and Gaffney to make the presentation. Mr. Stevens.
Thank you. A couple of general comments before I get to the reports and the charts and graphs. We'd like to thank Molly Goiki from Plant Moran, as well as the city staff for their courtesy cooperation and assistance as we worked through fieldwork. Fieldwork went very well again this year, as it always does. What I plan to do is touch on the highlights, but if you have questions, feel free to stop me, and we'll go through those at any time. The purpose of an audit is to provide opinions as to whether the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects, in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. The city did receive unqualified opinions on each of their reporting units, which is a good thing. It's a clean opinion for each of the reporting units, and everything has been presented in accordance with GAAP, generally accepted accounting principles. To highlight the general fund, total revenues for the fiscal year were $2,367,000. That was a decrease of approximately 7% from the previous year. Total expenditures were $2,345,000. That was a decrease of 10% from the previous year. And fund balances of June 30, 2011, was $637,420. Portions of that were earmarked for specific purposes, and the amount that was unassigned was $633,727. That represents approximately 27% of the annual expenditures for the general fund. At June 30, 2010, you were at 23%. So, an improvement of 4% in terms of fund balances related to total expenditures. The composition of the general fund revenues, primary source of revenue is property taxes at approximately 60%, followed by charges for services at 22%, very consistent with the previous year. Expenditures, largest use of funds is the public safety function at 45%, followed by general government at 24%. Would also like to point out that the segregated capital asset fund, fund balance, ended the year at $3,279,157. That has been committed by the City Commission. The amount that's actually restricted by ordinance is $3,242,872, and that represents the corpus of that fund. We also issued a report on internal control, and we discussed that report in the workshop that preceded the meeting, and went through any questions on the audited financial statements and the report on internal control at that time. But I'll ask the City Commission again if there are any questions on the audited financial statements or the report on internal control.
Aaron, a couple of the handouts have a date of December 31, 2011 on them. Are those going to be changed?
Yes, yep. We asked for management representations. It's a three-page letter that says that you've given us everything that we've asked for, and you have title to the assets and so forth. We're going to date the reports as of the date of that letter, but we wait for approval from the City Commission before we do that.
But we don't have to wait until December 31st to file these with the state?
No, no, they will be filed tomorrow, upon acceptance.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the audit of the city financial statements for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2011, be received and filed as recommended.
Second round. May we take a vote?
Commissioner Rubino?
Yes.
Mr. Lenko?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Aaron, and thank you, Molly, for, with Molly.
Good job.
All your work in getting these financial statements ready. It's been much smoother since Plant Moran's been on board. Next item is the monthly disbursement report.
Everyone's accounts payable were divided to all of you prior to the meeting for October. Accounts payable was $503,322.30, of which $265,518.96 were in tax liabilities, and payable for the month was $52,047.32.
Again, those tax liabilities are amounts worth collecting for other entities and then passing them on. Any questions on the disbursement report? Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move the October 2011 dispersment report to be received and filed.
Support. May we take a vote?
Mr. Lenko?
Yes.
Commissioner Rubino?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes, motion carries. Next item is consideration of liaison reports. Donk, you've been laid up. Do you have any liaison reports?
Sorry, I don't.
George?
Not so much a liaison report because the Planning Commission and DDA didn't meet, but I did want to congratulate the Planning Chair and his wife for a new addition to their family. It's always fun to see our population grow, and in a city like ours, that's a significant percentage increase. So, they'll be out the pool in years to come. That'll be great. The other thing I wanted to do is thank the Planning DDA, because in my rotation, that was my last stop, and it's an important group, and I think they accomplished a lot in the past year and prior years, too.
Did you do every junior commission?
Yeah, yep.
Next item, Amy, consideration of the official certification and election report of the general election, held Tuesday, November 8, 2011.
I received the official canvas from Oakland County Elections on November 10, and I have the following. We had total voters of 1,031, which is roughly 45% of the population turned out to vote. And then the vote tallies are as follows. Charles Kellert with 330 through 32 voters, excuse me. Jason Crizziak with 500 voters, George Lenko with 383 votes, Ann Perry with 658 votes, and Ryan Stern with 130 votes.
Is there a motion to accept the official certification and election report?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the official certification and election report of the general election be received and filed.
Is there support?
I support that.
May we take a vote?
Commissioner Rubino?
Yes.
Commissioner Lenko?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes, motion carries. Before we go on to items number 10 and 11, George, I would like to thank you and Commissioner Kellert for many years of hard work and dedication to this community.
Absolutely.
Kellert already beat you to finding his next volunteer opportunity. He has become today a trustee of the foundation.
Very cool.
Thank you.
Thanks, man.
Text me with the score of the basketball game when I get home. Who's first, Jason?
Um...
No, Ann's first. Number 10. Put your packet up here, Ann, and if you'll step over here.
Yes.
Mayor?
Right there.
On the...
Oh, thank you.
Can you raise your right hand? I'll repeat after me.
Okay.
Hi, Ann Perry.
Hi, Ann Perry.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan?
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Pleasant Ridge City Charter and City Code?
The Pleasant Ridge City Charter and City Code.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of City Commissioner?
Of the Office of City Commissioner.
And I will endeavor to secure and maintain?
And I will endeavor to secure and maintain.
An honest and efficient administration?
An honest and efficient administration.
Of the affairs of the city?
Of the affairs of the city.
Free from partisan distinction or control?
Free from partisan distinction or control.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability. Thank you very much.
Hi, Jason Crizziak?
Hi, Jason Crizziak.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan?
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Pleasant Ridge City Charter and City Code?
The Pleasant Ridge City Charter and City Code.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of City Commissioner?
Of the Office of City Commissioner.
And I will endeavor to secure and maintain?
And I will endeavor to secure and maintain.
An honest and efficient administration?
An honest and efficient administration.
Of the affairs of the city?
Of the affairs of the city.
Free from partisan distinction or control?
Free from partisan distinction or control.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability. Thank you very much.
Do you want us to go forward or wait?
No, go forward.
Establishment of the second Tuesday of each month at 7:30 PM is the Regular City Commission Meeting Day. Adoption of Robert's Rules of Order for the City Commission and other city-appointed bodies. Appointment of Commissioner Jerry Bushy as Deputy Mayor, term to expire November 12, 2012. Authorization of Mayor Ralph A. Costelli Jr. and Deputy Mayor Jerry Bushy, City Clerk, Amy Allison, Assistant City Manager Scott Peterzak, and Police Chief Carl Switkowski to sign checks on behalf of the city of Pleasant Ridge. Appointment of Commissioner Jerry Bushy as liaison to the Pleasant Ridge Police Board, term to expire November 12, 2012. Amy, should these all be two years? The next several?
They should be 2013.
2013, so amend C to 2013, and E to 2013. F, Appointment of Commissioner Jason Crizziak as liaison to the Pleasant Ridge Recreation Commission, term to expire November 12, 2013. G, Appointment of Commissioner Jerry Bushy as liaison to the Pleasant Ridge Planning Commission and Downtown Development Authority, term to expire November 12, 2013. H, Appointment of Commissioner Frank Rubino as liaison to the Pleasant Ridge Historical Commission, term to expire November 12, 2013. I, Appointment of Commissioner Ann Perry as representative to the Ferndale Public Schools Superintendent's Advisory Committee and the Woodward Avenue Transit Committee, terms to expire November 12, 2013. J, Appointment of Mayor Ralph A. Costelli Jr. as the Legislative Coordinator to the Michigan Municipal League. K, Appointment of Mr. Charles Digby as the Pleasant Ridge Police Commissioner, term to expire November 12, 2013. L, Appointment of City Clerk Amy M. Allison as the City Representative and City Manager Sherry W. Ball as alternate to the Intergovernmental Cable Communications Authority, term to expire November 12, 2013. M, Appointment of Mayor Ralph A. Costelli Jr., Commissioner Jerry Bushy, and City Manager Sherry W. Ball as the city's representatives to the Fire Protection Agreement Committee, term to expire November 12, 2013. N, Appointment of City Manager Sherry W. Ball as delegate and City Clerk Amy M. Allison as alternate to the Woodward Dream Cruise Board of Directors, term to expire November 12, 2013. O, Appointment of City Manager Sherry W. Ball as delegate, and Mr. Scott R. Peterzak is alternate to the Southeastern Oakland County Resource Recovery Authority, known as SACRA, Board of Trustees. P, Appointment of Mr. Scott R. Peterzak as delegate and City Manager Sherry W. Ball as alternate to the Southeastern Oakland County Water Authority, known as SACWA, Board of Trustees. Q, Appointment of Ms. Stacy Stutcher and Mr. Dave Tiger to the Huntington Woods Library Board. R, Appointment of City Manager Sherry W. Ball as Act 51 Administrator for the city of Pleasant Ridge. S, Appointment of Mayor Ralph A. Costelli Jr. as delegate and City Manager Sherry W. Ball as alternate to the annual meeting in the Michigan Municipal League to be held in October of 2012. T, Appointment of Sherry W. Ball as Officer Delegate and Scott Peterzak as Employee Delegate to the Municipal Employees Retirement Systems, known as MRRS, annual meeting to be held in September of 2012. Is there a motion for those appointments?
Mr. Mayor, I move the items 12A through 12L, or T, rather, regarding the organization of the 2011-2013 Pleasant Ridge City Commission be approved.
Is there support?
I support.
May we take a vote?
Commissioner Rubino?
Yes.
Commissioner Crizziak?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes, motion carries. Next item is consideration of the governmental reports. Helene, I saw you somewhere. There you are.
Just briefly, I asked a question at our last Finance Committee. Many people have been stopping me, saying, "Okay, how do we not be Wayne County? What are we doing in Oakland County so that we can assure our taxpayers that we are running a good fiscal ship?" So, a couple of Brooks's deputies, Bob Daddo, Jerry Poissons, and our Head of Management and Budget, Lori Van Pelt, addressed this topic at the end of our Finance Committee. And we have many checks and balances, and they said, "Part of the accounting standards from the top, you know, what's the standard there, and do we run a fiscally sound ethical ship, you know, top-down?" And I've been assured of that. We have multiple different purchasing policies and standards that anybody can read online. All of our contracts are online. There is a very solid purchasing process that we abide by on all of the contracts unless they are approved otherwise. When there are sole-source contracts, they have to come before the Finance Committee, and we scrutinize that. Now, a few years ago, we frankly asked for more explanation. It wasn't, we used to have a one-page, now we have, I think, a three-page of questions telling me why you had a sole-source contract, you know, and sometimes we ask for people to explain that. These are just some of the things that Oakland County does to ensure that we are practicing things. Position appointments have to go through multiple different levels, that we have to appropriate money. So, I felt assured that we are fiscally sound and watching things closely. I want you to know that.
And Helene, do you still have the program whereby cities can buy through the county's bid process, where you guys have, in effect, sent things out to bid on behalf of all of us?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. We work as your agent.
Okay.
And I know that, or, you know, collaborative, and certainly with collaborations bidding, we could do that as well. And just a quick reminder, on the county website, www.oakgov.com, and there are some directories available, some services that I want to remind people about. We had Veterans Day last week. We do have a very vibrant Veterans Affairs Department in Oakland County with the intent that federal regulations are very complex. So, we have veteran counselors there to help our Oakland County residents file for different benefits. We bring in well over a million to $2 million for our veteran residents. We do have a cemetery, many other services. When we looked at the budget, we wanted to make sure that we had enough staffing to service people coming home from the wars, and we've been assured that we do, and we're going to be watching that closely. Another important benefit to remind people about is our housing counseling through the Community and Home Improvement Department. We have four housing counselors that can help people with mortgage housing issues, and there is no charge for that service. We get it as part of our taxpayers, you know, as taxpayers. And again, we increased the housing counseling staff last year intentionally out of the Board of Commissioners' budget, so we can service our residents and help them keep their homes. Yes?
Thank you, Helene. What's the best way for people who would be interested in the housing counseling to get in touch with those services?
Well, the best way to reach that is to either go online at www.oakgov.com, or you can call the Community and Home Improvement Division, 248-858-0493.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mayor, I just had one question, maybe this might be more towards Sherry. Do we have a head count as to how many veterans actually live in Pleasant Ridge? Do we know that?
We don't know that.
We do not know that, no. We have our memorial stone, you know. I have no idea. Do you have any idea? Any ballots out of...
Just one.
Yeah. I mean, I'm personally aware of one person, but whether there's more than that, I don't know.
Okay. Thank you. Helene, Ted was very glad to see you show up, because now he can do a recycling report. Any other governmental reports?
Oh, yes.
Ted, your turn. You just used up half your time!
I had some technical difficulties, sorry. Mayor and Commissioner, today is America Recycles Day. Wanted to let you know and the viewers. And second thing is, is this, bins are half-priced this month only. So, instead of paying $12, you can pay $6, and happy recycling's day. Any questions?
Thank you. Any other governmental reports? Public discussion item is not on the agenda. City Managers' Report?
Well, Mayor and Commissioner, welcome to the new commissioners. I think I've said that 40 times since we already, we have met, and I've gone over a few things, and it's going to be a fun time, as I think you know now. I have a couple of things to report, and then I'll move on quickly. I did attend our police officer's graduation from fire training, or our second police officer's graduation from fire training class. It was a great little ceremony, and it was for Officer Robert Reed, and it was scheduled on a Friday, and the story is, he approached the city to attend the full-time class for a reason, and that was because his baby was due middle November, and this class happened to end the end of October. So, timing was great, so we thought. And then the baby came during finals week on that Monday, so we could not miss a day of class. He did approach the school and was able to make arrangements to be at the hospital. He graduated on that Friday, and he was second in his class, and he's very proud. So, congrats to Officer Reed.
And the baby was a...
Baby was a boy.
Okay.
Yes, and he still is not sleeping, so...
All the more reason to come to work.
You see, yeah. You see, Rob, he's got dark circles under his eyes. The Thanksgiving Arts Show is, it's been a number of years since the city has actually sponsored an art show, and we have a fairly new Recreation Commission member who has had experience in this and willingly volunteered to take this on, and has done just a great job in pulling it all together. It will be held this Friday and Saturday, Friday from 6 to 9, Saturday, I think from 10 to 4, or 9 to 4. It is a $3 admission charge and a $5 admission charge on Saturday, with the idea being that if you bring canned foods to this, the Recreation Commission is going to donate that to a forgotten harvest. I will remind residents that curb side leaf collection is ongoing. The last day for residents to place leaves at the curb is Sunday, November 27, and leaf collection will, the last day for the trucks to be out is that Monday after. And I think that's all the reports I have for you.
Just have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Sherry, is it possible that when we do a specific street for leaf collection, that we can notify or put signs up the day before so people know? Because I got a couple complaints last week that when the vehicles were coming down, people were parked in front of the resident's home, and their leaves could not be picked up. But if notification was given, at least the day before, that on Monday or on Tuesday, the leaves are going to be picked up, please keep all cars, if we can do something like that?
We tried that several years ago. Actually, it's not very effective, because if the trucks run behind and they don't make it on that day, it really creates havoc for complaints, more so. I will tell you that this year with the new trucks that are on the street, last week they did citywide collection twice, and in my history, that has never been done before. But you can rest assured that there are going to be properties where there are cars in front, whether we put signs out or not, and we will go back and get those leaves, it may not be the same day. But we did try that. We've tried, you know, posting at the ends only of the street, allowing parking on the opposite side, asking residents to put leaves on the opposite side, and I think the system that we have, although not perfect, seems to be pretty effective.
Any other other business?
Excuse me, Mayor, I would just ask Sherry if she could update the commission and the audience on the negotiations on the fire contract?
Oh, absolutely. I don't know that it's anything different from last month, but I will tell you that, well, there have been no additional meetings for the past month. There is a response to the city of Ferndale pending, which I think...
We're expecting response from them.
And we are waiting on a response from them. We thought it would be here last week, we thought it would be here yesterday. I did see the Ferndale City Manager at a meeting today, and it's expected any day, so...
I talked to Mayor Coulter on Thursday at a social event. He said it was on his computer yet for him to read.
Yes.
So, I know it went from April to Dave, so right now it's in his court, the last I heard.
Okay.
That's the latest, absolutely.
Anything else?
I have something, Mayor.
Yes.
Winter tax bills for everyone's notification will be mailed December 1st. If you are homeowner that you're paying your own taxes and you do not receive a bill, give me a call, and we'll get you a duplicate copy. That means if you... That means if you have a mortgage, it was requested by the mortgage company.
Okay. And we have a reception for the newly electeds in the City Hall portion. It's going to be cramped, but if we told the Women's Club they had to cancel their event tonight, they would hate us all forever, so go forth in the City Hall side and eat. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move.
Is there support?
I support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.[1390.26]